Welcome everyone to the city council meeting for Monday, May 23rd. If we can have a roll call to establish court, please ma'am.
Joyce Elder.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Jerry McClung.
Yep.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Mickey Schneider.
Here.
And James, absent with notice.
All right, if we can do the pledge of allegiance, stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Mitchell.
Could we add to the agenda under new business, maybe number five, Washington Street parking?
How ironic, I was going to do the same thing. Very good, yes.
Well, I got, I got the prep from the lady, the boss.
All right, I guess we got a second?
Second.
Okay.
New business, Washington Street.
Yep. Anything else?
Oh, yes, we have noticed that new business number one will be postponed.
We will postpone the appeal from planning commission denial on conditional use permit for one unit bed and breakfast from Jacqueline Cross. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Get a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? If not, all those in favor of the minutes that submitted, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. As far as, we've got a couple of, we've got an application from Susan Tharp for the cemetery. Yes ma'am?
To make a motion that in view of her history and knowledge of her, that we go ahead and approve her tonight as the newest member of the cemetery commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, you got a motion, a second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving Susan Tharp for the cemetery commission, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? See, I had, I thought I had something on the auditorium, but let's go ahead and jump down to the food truck committee. I think we got a report from somebody on that. Mr. Beecham, would you like to come up and give a report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Beecham. I have a report from our three-person food truck and trailer, mobile food truck and trailer committee, and I think Paige was putting your packet, I hope. It should be a single sheet, but if you could bear with me, what I'd like to do, if possible, is just read it out loud so that we can have it kind of disseminate to the public and part of the public record. We've been meeting for the last several weeks and have basically worked out a pretty good framework for what we consider a workable solution to the mobile food truck concerns that seem to exist with both the citizens and the council. And so, if I could, I'll just read this, the page you have is called "Mobile Food Truck and Trailer Vendor Proposal." Under this proposal, it is the site owner, not the mobile food truck or trailer owner, who would apply for and possibly be granted a permit that would allow for the operation of an FTT at that site. A site owner who has granted a permit would then be free to independently arrange for the mobile FTT vendor of his or her choice to operate on that particular property. Mobile FTT vendors must be properly licensed and meet all requirements for operation in the city of Eureka Springs and the state of Arkansas. The designated areas and the number of FTTs allowed, we have come up with a total number of permits to be issued at five. The total number of possible mobile FTTs allowed within the city limits on private property at any one time would be a total of eight. The three designated areas are, the first one is Main Street from the junction of Highway 62 to the northern city limit past the train station, as well as, oh wait, that's, yeah, that's, and there would be one permit for one single FTT on that, that would be sort of from the Pied Piper all the way down to the train station, so it would cover all of Main Street.
Private property permits, you're talking about?
Private property permit. All of the, all of, everything we're discussing is on private property.
Okay.
The second designated area is White Street, and that's the C-3 zoned properties only, which are fairly limited up there, but we thought that would give that part of town a possibility of a food truck as well. And there would be one permit for one single FTT in the White Street area. The third area would be the Highway 62, Highway 23 South corridor. This includes Highway 62 from the western to the eastern city limits, and Highway 23 South from the intersection at 62 to the southern city limit. And there would be two permits in that area for single FTTs. There would be one permit in that area for a food truck or trailer court, and a food court would be designated as up to four food vendors in one site. The permit distribution, site owner applicants will be entered into a once-a-year lottery to be held in mid-November. There will be four separate lotteries, Main Street, White Street, the 6223 single unit, and the 6223 food court unit. All entries in each of the lotteries will be drawn in order to establish a prioritized list of qualified sites for each area. The permits will be awarded to the first applicant on each list, first two on the 6223, first two on the 6223 single FTT list, there are two permits that will be available up there. The permits will be for one year, beginning on January 1st. The lottery will be held during a regular televised city council meeting, I don't know if we can get Van White in here to do the honors, but maybe. FTT activity must take place on each site by May 1st, or the permit for that site will be forfeited. A forfeited permit will be reissued to the next available interested site owner on the prioritized list from that lottery. And that's kind of the rundown, yes Bob?
Skip number four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Thanks. I'm back to the designated areas. On number four, we had mobile FTT vendors who meet the stipulations set forth by the Parks Department are allowed in all city, Eureka Springs city parks with Park, the Parks Department permission. Yes?
What does that actually, what does that mean? I don't know that I really understand.
Well, with the, in regards to the parks.
If Parks is having, say, for example, the, the thing that Clear Springs does down there.
Right.
So Parks says it's okay?
Parks as sort of an autonomous part of our city government, we've, and I think currently the peddling ordinance, which I know y'all are going to revisit, but I think currently Parks is not allowed to have food vendors at Lake Leatherwood, for instance, if they have an event, I think, if that's how we read the peddling ordinance correctly. And until that's straightened out, this basically would allow Parks to have jurisdiction for vendors in park land. Now, the parks that would be considered for this would be Leatherwood Park, of course, but also Harmon Park and Magnetic Spring Park are the only two really in-town parks that have enough space to consider having a vendor.
They're separate from these other permits?
They're, they're not, they're separate, it would just be giving Parks autonomy over park land is, is what it would amount to. Yes, Mr. Mitchell?
A couple things, one, congratulations to the people that sat at the table and worked through this process. I think this never would have happened at the council table, so I would like to thank the three of you very much, that this is very concise, very well thought out, and I wasn't necessarily, when this started, a huge fan of the food trucks, I had thoughts about them and everything, but this, what I see on the paper here makes me much more comfortable and happy to see the process a lot, but I do have a couple questions.
Sure.
Under the proposal, the site owner would apply for the possible permit, I hate to say anything, but for the attorney, I guess, if something happens with the food trucks, say, they have E. coli and they poison a whole bunch of people, because the permit, does that apply, does the site, the person with the site, does that in any way oblige, drag them into that problem with the food truck?
Yes, it probably does, but they're probably going to get sued anyway.
Oh, okay, I just, I had to ask.
It's part of what we call the deep pockets lawsuit.
Not the city, but the property owner, so, and then the second one, the side, no, the mobile food vendors will be properly licensed and meet all requirements, are y'all going to have some kind of, does the site owner have to have an application, or who's going to check the licenses and the requirements, I mean, just, yes sir?
If I could address that, I could, I was going to go through our application process with you as well.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
But I will point out, all of the current food vendors have publicly displayed all the documentation from the state and the city.
Okay, good.
So, the, both, I think, the vendors that are operating in town, you can ask to see it, and it's, it's very visible on their wall.
But you've, you've set it up, you're setting it up, you're probably still working on, but you're setting it up for the site owner to, to have some assurances that a lot of stuff was done as, as part of the process, in other words.
Properly licensed.
Ma'am?
Properly licensed.
I think we're, I think we're setting it up so that we're all satisfied that everybody is properly licensed before, before we venture forward. Councilman Zeller?
The, the area from the intersection of 6223 to the eastern boundary of Eureka Springs is not included here?
I believe, I believe we had, I believe it was from 62 West all the way to the east.
62 West.
Is that not clear?
From the west or to the east?
Where are we looking at, number what?
Three.
Number three, this area includes Highway 62 from the western to the eastern city limits, that's, we're calling it the Highway 62 corridor.
Okay, because it, I was wondering if you were not allowing them in the Harley-Davidson, Pine Mountain, whatever, because I know the chamber was really enthusiastic about food trucks that they've had up there.
I think that's a good, that's a good potential location, that's.
Private property, too.
Yes, so, is that, is that, is that, does that satisfy you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, I just wanted to make sure before, okay.
Well, I know conversations I've had with the chamber, they liked the idea, and I would just made sure that we hadn't forgotten that area, that it was included, okay.
We've got positive feedback from several people that like the idea. Miss Schneider?
Of course, beans and cornbread didn't like it, but you know, okay, so, basically what this boils down to is, excuse me, you're letting, having private people apply for a permit, and then they get to pick and choose the truck that's going to be on their land?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What happens if nobody applies for private property?
Then, then, then there's no need to, it would just be dead water.
So if nobody with private property says, okay, I'll, I'll let you use my property, our food truck guys are just screwed.
That's correct, however, I know of several people that have approached us since this process has begun, saying that they will apply, certainly some food court vendors.
Okay, and the annual lottery, that is for the, the property owners, not the trucks?
That's correct.
Okay.
The concept here is that a truck, if they worked with various property owners, could basically move from the highway to downtown and back again, but they could only be in that one spot at one time, of course, but, but basically, it allows, it allows for mobile trucks to be mobile within, within.
So now, one truck could actually utilize three different private properties?
If the property owner, if the property owner can work that out, however, the truck, I think, I think is, our logic was, if the truck can only be one place at one time, so, so there can only be an X number of trucks operating in the city limits at any one time, but the trucks, and several of them have expressed interest in being open very late at night, and certainly you could be on the highway during the day and come down and operate in the downtown area at night, so it kind of covers, I think your concern was kind of an after-the-bar, late-night location.
Yeah, that's true, they're mainly down here the most.
And I think, I think this, this should help handle that concern, I mean, I think it.
On the train, you don't know, but.
But it basically means if there was a private, if there was one person downtown, the truck doesn't have to stay there the whole time. If they want, if they wanted to work out something with another property owner up on the highway to be up there part of the day, they could do that.
Okay, then the, the issue of, and I don't remember what it was that you said, or I didn't understand it one or the other, in regards to why this had to be done on private property as opposed to, like, the city parking lot that isn't, doesn't collect money at night, why that couldn't be, what was the deal on that?
Well, the downtown area on city property does have some locations, the highway, the Highway 6223 corridor has no city.
Yeah, I'm talking just these parking lots right here on either side of the courthouse.
Okay, but you were asking about our overall concern, and that was, that was it, that we couldn't, now here, there's also private lots, just one area over, I mean, it's not, it's not just the city lots that are available.
I'm asking about the city lots, that, that was my question.
Okay, all right, our concern about, about anything owned by the city is giving up parking.
Even though, even if we restricted it to late night, two nights a week?
If the city wanted, if, if you at the council table chose to allow that to be a part of this process, you could certainly change it to do that.
Oh, okay, so, see, that's what I didn't understand.
This is a, this is a draft, this is not, this is a concept that we were asked to bring to this table, and, and what we tried to do is fill it out enough that it may give everybody kind of some legs to work with.
So there wasn't anything illegal about it, it just was, okay, that was where I was misunderstanding, I thought you said it was illegal.
And I'm kind of wearing two hats here, when you said that about the parking, I was thinking of the planning commission, when we approached, when we were asked to give you an opinion, our opinion was that it should be on private property because all the, we would have to give up tourist parking to, to accommodate this, I think.
I was just going to respond to her.
Oh, okay.
Because I think one of, one of the concerns we were addressing was the concern from people who said, well, the vendors don't pay property taxes, they don't pay, the building is taxed, that kind of stuff, so, you know, if it's sitting on private property, you do have someone there that's paying property taxes.
Well, I think that concern, that was more in regards to brick and mortar, which is why I had stipulated from the very beginning, late night, two nights a week only, because they, nobody was open at that point, so nobody would be hurt.
Yes.
Okay, a couple of things.
Yes.
One is, conceivably, there could be eight of them operating at one time, plus.
Conceivably, yes.
Plus, any that would be on, on Parks properties.
No, that includes Parks properties. I thought that included, let's see, it was, was it five?
I don't think so.
No, no, you're right, okay, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay, so, I mean, not that there would be, but conceivably, there could be.
There could be eleven, I assume.
Yeah, okay. The, the other thing that concerns me, too, is that you're going to structure some requirements that, that the private property owner has to meet in relationship to placement, too, as well, right?
Yes, and, and that was part of the application process, if, when, when we're through with these questions, I can go over this real quickly and just kind of give you some idea of what we'd come up with on that. Was there any further?
Well, in, I, I'm trying to think of any, any particular situation so that this thing doesn't have to come back to the table all the time. If there is some sort of special event, is there any provision for some kind of a special permit? And, for instance, if all that property behind the bank up on the highway, if they wanted to have a Hawaiian festival, and it required the presence of several food trucks, would there be some way that, that could be sanctioned so that could happen? And I'm not saying it will happen, but we were thinking at one time, it brought up some kind of a food truck convention kind of thing, where you had lots of them parked, and that was considered by some tourist areas, an event that the town had, that brought an awful lot of people in the town. So, is there any, could there be any provision, if that came up, that there could be some kind of special permit?
I think it could be similar to what you may have with the parade issue now, which through the mayor's office, they basically issue a special permit, and I think we, we didn't cover that because we thought that might muddy the water a little bit at this table, but, you know, we also thought if, if a church group, for instance, was having an event at the church grounds, but, but then it sort of turned, you, it's kind of the difference between catering and, and an open event, and so, but, but I certainly think what you mentioned could be covered through the mayor's office.
Yeah, because at this point, I'm, I'm in favor of anything that might inspire a family to get in their car and drive to Eureka for a day.
Well, and we were also kind of inspired by your concept of working in an existing parking lot with a restaurant that doesn't open until night, you know, for dinner, and basically, the food truck would help promote that business, and that business would help promote the food truck, so, yes, Mr.?
The, so apparently, it would be structured where we would charge the property owner a fee, and then whatever they wanted to charge the, the purveyor, that would be entirely up to them, correct?
To some extent, what we have come up with, and this again comes back to our application, that we, the only fee that we have actually come up with as a group is an inspection fee, to be sure that the site meets all of city requirements, and if you wanted to charge a fee, a permit fee for that, that would certainly be up to the city council to do that. Because I would assume that the private property owner somehow, it must be, there must be some financial gain for them to want to give up.
I think there would be.
Yeah.
What, what, what kind of food product was available on White Street Friday night?
I think Victor did six different dishes, and there were two vegetarian.
He had his truck set up.
He had the truck set up.
And where was he set up? I didn't get to go.
He was set up, it wasn't actually in the C-3 zones of White, it was on a Mountain Street address, it was behind Sparky's Lodging, there's a large parking lot there that used to be the church parking lot, and he was set up there, and he had, it was, it was low trash, handheld food, he, he really tried to design it to meet the, the crowd, basically, but.
Was there other food sold on the street like that?
Nothing, well, I think the restaurant was open, Oscar's had some special thing, and certainly.
But no other, no other on-street vendor?
Not that I'm aware of, and I know food was given away at Holmes, but that was, and I think he was sponsored by the CAPC, I believe, I don't know, I didn't.
Oh, is that right, so it was a non.
I didn't get into the particulars of that, I just asked him, I just wanted to know what it was like to have a food vendor in a residential neighborhood, so it was kind of a interesting process for me.
Kind of like the ice cream.
Yes.
Is there any provisions, or did y'all talk about hours, or that the vehicle has to move or relocate, I'm thinking of the, the food truck over in Berryville, that's staying there.
It's just permanently parked.
That's permanently there, yeah.
Well, not permanent, it's semi-permanent. We did not discuss that, but our concept, I think, is more like the trucks are going to be, this gives them the freedom more to be encouraged to move from up on the highway to downtown and, and back, and, and be in different places where there might be a crowd at different hours, and, but certainly, a stipulation could be that, you know, every 24-hour period, the truck would have to, to move or something like that, I mean, it, again, this is just a working draft.
And was there any consideration about noise, because I think that's one of the, or that in the application?
That's, that's, that's in the application, so, can, can I just go through the application process? We didn't give you this copy, but, and I'll just go through it, but it's just the applicant name, their email, the property address, the owner address, the phone, cell number, if there is one, the name of the site, the property owner's name, and that's just all general information. Then, they would click, they would check a box here, request for a single vendor site, request for a mobile food court vendor site, and next to that would be generator, and they would either click yes or no, and that was an issue that sort of came up through the White Street time, I don't know if any of you were there, but the generator, they were not supposed to have a generator, it was supposed to be plugged into Sparky's, however, it wasn't, and the generator noise was considerable. So, we included in this application, if they have a generator, then no vendor shall use a generator in the downtown historic zone. The site inspection shall determine if generator noise is detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood in the Highway 6223 South corridor. So, any vendor that's located in the downtown area would basically have to have an electrical connection, and I think that's what, when all this started, when you had the meeting at the auditorium, I think that vendor was plugged up, and I think that the vendor that's at the farmer's market is self-contained, I don't think they require electricity, so it's not like we're putting an undue hardship on vendors by making that, but it, White Street was a little bit noisy, it was sort of like being at the state fair, is what it reminded me of, but, so.
County fair.
So, we did it, we did change just in the last day or two, we changed, so we've been kind of a, a changeable group, and, and anytime we came up with something, we thought we'd add to it. The rest of the application, the site must meet the following city requirements, a site plan showing the vendor location with the following measurements, and then we came up with parking areas, and parking areas that we have measured have been anywhere from, I think the city requires a parking space of nine by 19 feet, and I think that the, the parking spaces that we measured up at Pine Mountain Village were nine by 16 feet, and we were, we were asking that each single vendor has two parking spaces, plus enough space on the site for their vehicle, plus adequate ingress egress, which would basically be determined by the building inspector. So, we weren't trying to set up a look, in other words, this site can be moved around depending on the way the property is laid out.
Nothing open on, up onto the street, nothing, none of that?
No, it's all, well, it's all on private property, so, but there would be, there would have to be an ingress egress into the highway, and I think that our measurements on the trailer truck was something like 32 feet, if it was, so it would be like a 30, 32-foot amount of space for the truck and their trailer, and then two parking spaces, plus an ingress egress, and that would be basically what each individual site would require, which, you know, like for Pine Mountain Village, you could fit any number of places up there, but then there are also some much tighter places in town. And then, basically, a drawing would have to be provided and attached to this application, then it would be, I have read and understand the city regulations concerning my responsibilities, and will be in compliance with all Eureka Springs city code, signature of the applicant, and then we want to have a double sign-off by a signature of the building inspector, and the applicants will need to have an onsite inspection before they qualify for a site permit, a one-time $25 site visit fee will be charged, and unless there are changes to the site in the future, the fees and charges and visits are not necessary.
So it's not a per year?
Pardon?
That's not a per year per site? Well, it is, because there's a lottery.
It would be, it would be, it would, basically, I think our concept here is a one-time charge, if you meet our requirements, there's no reason to go back unless something changes with the site, and, and then there would be another 20, we were trying to. We were trying to, and $25 we just came up with, but we thought if, if the city has to send an inspector to look at the site, there should be a charge. And so we felt like that was a.
Wastewater, trash removed daily, that kind of thing?
Well, that's meeting city, all city code. So it's, that's basically puts it on the shoulders of the private property owner plus the vendor to work out. It basically kind of puts a lot of the responsibility on the property owner to come up with a, a workable situation, not only for them, but to help make the vendor happy too. And, you know, the vendors want to do the right, I mean, the ones I've met, I can't speak for all, but they want to, they want to make people happy and they want to do the right thing. They're going to pick up their trash and, and, and try to follow all city code, so. Yeah, yes, Ms. Snyder.
Okay, so going through the application, are y'all going to do any kind of time stipulation for this, for any of this area?
You mean time what?
Usage, daytime, brick and mortars?
No, that was not part of this. But again, this is, we're sort of bringing this to you. If that's a stipulation that you want to be contained in this, but.
Well, I know that's a major concern.
We're only allowing one food truck right now from the Pied Piper all the way to the train station during any 24-hour period. There will only be one truck down here unless you, unless you expand, at a time, unless you expand the, the number of permits that are available. Most of the activity for food trucks are focused more upon the highway. And, and our feedback from locals is, is that it really doesn't matter where they have to drive to get to the truck as long as there's some parking available for them to pull in and get it. And a lot of them would like the late night as well as.
See, I'm more thinking about the visitors who don't know the area and who are walking between Pied Piper and Chelsea.
Right.
They don't know to drive somewhere nor do they want to. They're parked, they're walking, they want to hit food. That's what I was wondering. But if this is going to be only one truck in the whole daytime.
Right. When, the whole, the whole 24-hour period, only one, only one truck at a, only one truck at a time. I'm sorry, that's a different way to phrase it.
Well, yeah, either way, so are you only going to allow one private property person in that whole stretch? What happened to the three or four that were mentioned before?
Well, I don't know that we had three or four. Can you enlighten me as to where, where, what location?
Going down Main from this corner down.
Well, I think part of our concept here with the whole idea of a lottery is those three or four can still enter the lottery and say, person A enters and they don't do this thing by May 1st, they're permanent expires. And person B then gets their opportunity to do something. From what I understand, there are a lot of people that would like to work with the property owners to make this happen.
Okay.
And I don't know, I mean, our whole concept here was how to limit the impact on the brick and mortar restaurants and yet still provide a food truck. And a lot of these food trucks, I think Mr. DeVito brought it up, that they have their own Facebook followings and they basically say, hey, we're going to be at X place. And tourists wouldn't know that, you're correct. But if they had a sign on the side of their vehicle or people in town could say, where are good places? I mean, I, I'm in retail and people say, where do, where do locals eat? And I say, well, go X and.
They used to tell me the one place to not go.
Well, and I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to promote anybody at this.
One place, which is no longer a city jail.
Are there any questions concerning the application or anything that I need to make clearer or?
No, congratulations.
Steve, thank you very much. I think you and the committee, Anne and Bob, and y'all did a great job of bringing this to the table.
And next time we make this an agenda item rather than.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and I guess have public comments? Beg your pardon? No public comments? All right. Nobody sign up? We got poppy? They left. All right.
That's why this should have been an agenda item.
Okay, um, well, do you want to pass out some poppies? All right. We had, would you explain what?
Kim Stryker worked for the city and American Legion Post Nine has received a proclamation from the mayor declaring puppy days over Saturday and Sunday of every memorial day. And the American Legion wished to gift counsel with puppies to wear in remembrance of those who have fought for our country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, American Legion, for bringing these. All right, we have under unfinished business. We have a date for the workshop for the development and, or discussion probably of the improvement district. And basically what we've come up with is June 8th at 4:00 PM. If y'all want to put that down on your calendars.
Here?
Yes.
This room?
Be June 8th, 4:00 PM in this room. And we're going to have a person, I don't know where he's coming from, but supposed to be an expert on improvement districts that Mr. Hall is going to be bringing up so we can talk to him and discuss all their thoughts and considerations.
Is June 8th a council meeting?
At 4:00 PM. Okay. Next item on the, is our ordinance, reclaiming jurisdiction over the portion of Hickory Street from the parks, and we don't have really any information on that, do we?
No, Mr. Gurkin is going back to parks to define the section.
Get a legal description and everything for us to get an ordinance. Okay. So we will defer that until further notice.
So we're going to table it? Okay.
Yes. Okay. And number three, update on ghost tours and tour homes from the planning commission. Mr. Beacham again. We need to put your chair right up here in front.
No, no, you don't.
I appreciate the offer.
All right.
We have met with both, in our meeting, just in public comments and also discussion with both the neighborhood folks as well as the owners of the ghost tours. And part of this is it's such a big issue because it's at night. It wouldn't be as big an issue if it was in, in the daytime hours. And the neighbors basically would like no one to get off the bus when they're in the neighborhood and just look out the windows and talk about the properties and the ghosts and all that stuff. And they would also like for the tour company, the tour company to have to abide by the Eureka Springs sightseeing tour license. And I'm not really aware of what their licensing process is. And so I'm just saying what they're, this is what the neighborhood is saying. The business owners are saying getting off the bus is what makes a big part of their tour a success. The bus is on a city street, the tour is on a public right of way, but the neighborhood is in a non-commercial R1-zoned area. And so that's kind of where we are at loggerheads here. I met with the mayor and a suggestion was to call Savannah, Georgia. Apparently there are a lot of ghosts there and find out just what their approach to this is. And, and indeed, they have an approach to it. They basically, through their licensing process, they require a lot of what we require with our sightseeing tour license. But they also place limits on walking tours in specific areas of town. And some of the limits are based on the time of year and some are year-round. And it's basically because they have large groups of people that are in residential neighborhoods making too much noise. And some times of the year, it's more allowed than other times of the year. But it's the same issue that we have. It's at night and people are walking around. So in my looking at this, it really seems like it's more of a licensing issue than necessarily licensing issue, the process and restrictions on a license as opposed to, to any other change that I can see. But I, I don't know, I mean, other than that, I, it seems like both groups are, are at loggerheads.
Well, I, I wonder, okay, if we take all this seriously and decide who can get on a bus or where they can walk, what is going to happen when the parks gets their trail system up and running? Because we're not going to be able to regulate that as to how you can only use it during the day or how you can only use groups of five at a time. I mean, they could have a whole, you know, Boy Scout group going in there, 30 or 40 people at a time. So what are we going to get ourselves into if we try making rules and regulations for a ghost tour? Is this going to have to apply to people walking at night? I mean, I can, I can see a big hassle coming up with the trail people is what I can see if we try regulating who can walk where at what time of the day, especially if these trails are public property and they go through private property.
Well, part of our concern is also the Christmas tour of homes.
Yeah, okay.
Which is residential neighborhoods and.
I mean, there's always so far we can go to interfere with this, is what I'm saying, regulate it, yeah.
But I think, from what I gather with this situation, and it only came to our table late in the process, the, the tour owners kind of maybe went a little bit far in terms of using a home as a tour home. And we're going through it with flashlights in the dark and shining lights in people's windows and maybe even walking into people's private gardens and taking their pictures, putting their arms around statues and things.
Oh, happy for food on Halloween.
Well, so, but that's where, that's where everybody got upset. And now the tour company is kind of backing off of that, but there doesn't seem to be any satisfying the, the neighborhood because I, I, I think there was a previous tour company, Michelle. McDonald.
McDonald.
McDonald. That went through there, but basically she just told people what they were seeing and never stopped. And when she did stop, she only stopped at public accommodations, the Crescent Hotel, the Springs, to let people get out and walk around. So that's.
Well, that might be her thought for the poor people. Maybe Carrie Nation's spring over there, if her ghost, ghost is still about, that sort of thing, yeah.
I think, isn't she buried in Peculier, Missouri or something?
Well, yeah, but.
Does the ghost come home to roost?
There are no rules about ghosts. They can go anywhere, you understand.
I'm sorry, I haven't, I haven't taken the tour.
Especially if they're inspector strength. I'm an authority, yeah.
It's all the beer joints in town.
Yeah, there you go.
So this is still on planning's table and you're going to eventually recommend something? Is, was that what I thought I heard?
Well, it's what you thought you heard, but I don't know what, at this point in time, other than, I don't know what to recommend. I mean, it seems to me, from what I've been reading, that it's more of a licensing issue. And I don't really know that that's, is that part of planning's procedures? It just seems, it seemed like that's maybe beyond our scope.
Seems to me.
I was, I was basically just trying to negotiate and hope to make a win-win for everyone, but.
I was just trying to dump it back on planning and you didn't buy it.
I understand, Mr. Mitchell, and I'll be happy to come back here and give you another review, but.
I understand. I understand.
This sounds to me like something that eventually is going to settle down if these two people muddle it over. I mean, I don't know. I don't know if we want to get involved.
Anne?
The simplest fix. And these people have changed at every complaint. They have altered their business plan to accommodate the neighbors. And they are the ones who are giving and giving and giving and giving and giving. If they were to agree to have their guests, their customers stay on the bus after a certain hour at night, they would have given the last thing that the neighbors say they want. Now, whether the neighbors can graciously say thank you and go on, that would be. But we don't need a new licensing category because sightseeing tours does not fit this at all.
Well, why don't we just let them tough it out? I'm not going to solve that.
That's an option too.
Well, should we refer phone calls in someone's direction?
To the licensing authority.
So what, what is the, the license that they have?
Tour vehicles.
Tour vehicles. And there's no restrictions on the tour vehicles?
Correct. Other than common sense.
And I guess to the city attorney, I mean, there's really nothing legally that says that they can't get out on the sidewalks. It's all public.
As long as they're not violating noise ordinances or things of that nature, there probably isn't a lot. Unless we want to put some kind of restrictions that, as he said, may run afoul of the Boy Scouts and the trails and everything else.
Yeah.
You're not allowed to scream after 10:00 PM, you know?
Is that what Michelle McDonald operated on her, under was tour vehicles?
And her company still does that exact license.
She just didn't, she just didn't stop. And, I mean, part of their whole thing is this house in this residential neighborhood. So that's the whole issue. I will say they do get out in another residential neighborhood. I think they walk Armstrong Street, which I believe is zoned residential. And they walk it all the way down to the courthouse, I think, or down behind us here.
Yeah, they walk down Basin Spring, Basin Avenue, which is really a set of steps.
Right. And that's part of their spiel, but they don't, there have been no complaints from that neighborhood.
Any other comments, questions?
Did they ever come in and see you?
Beg your pardon?
Did they ever come in and see you last week?
Who?
Two weeks ago, when those tour guys.
Yes. They did.
So we're going to just let the tour operator and the, the public continue to negotiate and work this out, and there's no reason at this time for counsel to take any action?
I'll go with that.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Muir about it. I'm not sure.
Mrs. Muir?
Yeah.
Let us know what the comments are.
I will.
Kirk Street's not there, so you can get out.
Thank you, Steve, on that one. Under our new business, we had the appeal for the planning commission denial and conditional use. And we had that, we're going to have that deferred. But I do have a question for the city attorney. It seemed like there was a little bit of confusion. And I want to make sure that the planning commission, while Steve is here. The planning commission, if, my understanding is when this came up, it failed for a lack of a second. Does that constitute a denial? So it comes straight to, if she wants to appeal? Is that an appealable? Or do they have, does the planning commission have to actually make a yes or no?
At that point, it would act as a denial, I think, when it could come to the table.
So it can come straight to the table without having to go back to, without the planning commission having to do anything?
You're talking about Hickory Street? I'm sorry.
No, Kirk Street.
Kirk Street, that's separate.
BB license.
That was just my question.
Can I ask you a question?
Business number one.
Yes.
If, if there's no denial, no reason given, how, how can you appeal no reason?
Well, the council may found that there's nothing to make a recommendation or no, no way to take an action. It may have to turn around and send it back to planning with additional requests. But at this point, if you don't, if you don't treat it as a denial, the person has no way of getting any reconsideration.
Right.
At this point. And therefore you would be basically denying them. So it is a denial.
So in essence, what we'll be doing is similar to what we did last week. We have three options, you know, approving, denying, or sending it back to the planning commission for further information and study.
But you just said, send it back with a request. What kind of request?
You can make, or requests of the planning to make findings.
A reason for denial?
Yeah.
And they did that, they did that at the last one, at their last planning meeting when they had one come up. They, they went around, the secretary went around the room and asked each person why they voted the way, what the reason was, so that it's officially on the record. And I thought that was a really good move.
Okay. So, I mean, we're basically, this will be, we'll wait and see what happens.
Okay.
Isn't there a timeframe, even though it's postponed, isn't there a timeframe? This is supposed to have happened within 30 days, if I think I read stuff correctly today. Supposed to have been brought to counsel. Supposed to have been brought to council.
The appeal is to be filed during that time period. I didn't find, when we looked the other day, that there is a restriction as to exactly how long council has to take for they have to act.
That's true, I didn't see that.
But it does, there is a thirty day requirement window that they noticed that they were appealing.
And they made it within that?
I haven't been asked to look, but I'm assuming they did.
Thank you.
Um, all right. Uh, new business, item number two. We're talking about, uh, getting some dates for, uh, putting sealed bids out for White Street Fire Station. But I have something else here.
Excuse me, Mr. Ferris, did, did I miss something as far as Hickory Street?
Mm-hmm, they tabled it.
Oh, they did?
Yes, sir. Because he didn't do anything on the legal...
We didn't have any, uh, we don't have any legal description or anything yet, so Mr. Durkin is still...
Oh, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Working on legal descriptions.
Oh, gosh.
For falling asleep at the wheel.
I wasn't paying attention.
You were chasing ghosts.
You were with Mrs. Muir.
Mrs. Muir and I were, we were conversing, that's right.
Yeah. Um, okay.
We have this instead of the date.
Um, yeah, I see, uh, two different things here. Uh, did we have, we had a...
Yes, that is another question. That's, that's after this one.
That's number three. Okay.
Yes.
All right, can I get a motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
All right, um, what we're needing to do is to allow you guys, I guess I need a motion for you to, uh, allow me to put up for sealed bids, the White Street Fire Station. I think there's some issues there that I've got to still resolve, but I can get that resolved, hopefully, and then...
So you need us...
Put it up for bids, for sealed bids.
So you need us to give you a motion?
Yes.
There it comes.
Oh, for, yeah, for discussion's sake, I made a motion that, that, uh, that we, uh, give the mayor permission to put the White Street Fire Station up, uh, for, for bid.
Yeah.
To sell it.
Correct.
Second.
Okay. Um, we got, this is, this is a crazy thing. Uh, there's some, there's a lease on this property, and actually we have two concerned property owners here, too, two involved property owners. Uh, I think I sent y'all, y'all have got copies of the old lease? Uh, I don't have it in front of me.
Are you selling the station property?
The land or the...
Well, it's behind the property. Mr. Tychus, would you like to come up and, um, explain some, since you've been involved with this for about...
Twenty-eight years.
I was going to say forty, but yeah, twenty-eight, forty. I know you're a youngster.
Uh, my name's Dick Titus, I live at twelve White Street, and I have the adjoining property to the fire station, uh, on the south side. Uh, Mr. Goodlock in the fifties requested that, uh, the city give him, uh, ten feet of the lot that the fire station's sitting on, and then he came back and he asked them to give him half of it, which would make a twenty foot, uh, so he could have a driveway. And then he came and he asked the city if he could have a lease on the property behind the fire station so he could build a garage, now that he had a driveway. And so the city said, yes, we, we will give you a lifetime lease that can only be broken if we expand the fire station, and you can build a garage back there. Well, Mr. Goodlock got cold feet, and he built the garage, and it's kind of on the property, but he had intended to turn it behind the fire station, so you would come down the driveway and make a right into the garage. But he built it at the end of the driveway, but it does encroach on the lease, which fulfills the lease. So, um, the, Mr., the attorney has looked at this, uh, he doesn't remember, it was ten years ago, but, uh, and the council did decide that I do have a lease on that property and it goes with that, that house from, forever, until the fire station's expanded. So my question to the mayor was, will you continue to honor the lease for, from now on, or do you want to actually deed the property to me, uh, if you sell the fire station? Because there's no provisions to sell the fire station and how that would affect the lease. But it's just a small piece of land that's only accessible by a little small walkway, uh, on, on my driveway.
Mr. McLeod?
Well, is it possible that, that we could sell that in two pieces? We could sell the fire station up to the backside where what you have, I'm sure there's a, there's, I'm, I'm guessing there's a setback or a distance between the back of the building and, and what you...
Goes right up to the building.
Goes right up to the building.
There, there's no longitude, latitude, what you, it just says, behind the fire station, which is all encompassing, which includes, which the lease does not include vacated Edward Street, which appears and disappears on the plats, depending on what year you look at. It was never actually, it's there, but it was never, it's vacated on the big map on the wall downstairs. So there's the fire station, there's this little section of land that I have a lease on, and then there's Edward Street, which has been vacated. So I'm in between a vacated street and a fire station. So, but I have a lease, so you can't put it up for sale unless we do something to satisfy my lease. But I'm willing to buy that property and Edward Street and the fire station, and I'll pave White Street if y'all will just let me buy this thing.
You're going to pave White Street?
I'll pave it. To John Cross's specifications and make a concrete.
How do you feel about, how do you feel about sirens?
What do you have it?
But, no, it, it's very complicated, and then my friend, Mr. Beecham back there, has the fire station sitting on his property in the very back corner in a pie slice, about two feet long and about six inches wide, because the lot lines run at an angle and all the houses on White Street are built parallel to the street.
Is that, is that, does this, is that evidenced by survey?
Mm-hmm. I paid for a survey, so you have a plat.
I would love to see all that, but we...
Oh, it's here, I've given it to Ann and...
It would make, it would really make a big difference in me understanding exactly what we're talking about.
Well, okay, the fire station was on a forty-foot wide...
If you want, I have, we have a copy of it downstairs, if you want to take a five-minute recess, I can go down and get copies made.
And I'd also like to hear some from what our attorney has thought about this up to this point.
And we can, yeah, I'd love to look at it, and it would certainly...
It would help to have a vision.
It does, it does, yeah.
Because it's three different pieces of property.
And I thought we should have had it in your packet, and I apologize for not having it.
So we've moved, motion to, uh, take recess.
Recession, five minutes until we come back, okay. Thank you. All right, we're back into business here.
I really am.
You don't need to.
Mr. Tychus, someone come up here for a moment? Now, I believe what we're looking at for the public is the track B is where the fire station is. Your lease would be...
Track C.
Track C. And the alley or...
Uh, Eureka Street.
Eureka Street.
Edward, I'm sorry, Edward Street.
Is that track A?
That's D.
D. And then, okay.
And my garage actually sits, as does Peggy Kilgard's, in Edward Street. We sit all the way to the back of that lot.
Okay.
And so when you look at different, uh, like Peggy Kilgard's, uh, ten White Street, uh, Edward Street has been vacated on her, at her abstract, uh, or Emilio's, it's been vacated, David Hager and Ruth Hager's been vacated. On my particular lot, and I think, is, is it vacated on yours, Steve?
Not vacated.
On my particular lot, because we paid cash for the house, we didn't have it surveyed, it's not vacated. So, but on the map downstairs in front of Ann's office, if you look where it says Edward Street, it's, somebody's written vacated on there many, many, many years ago. And it's just a dashed line on the old fire maps.
And I'm not sure where, where Steve's...
This little dashed line that you see is a, is a fence that goes on Steve's property, and it comes over and runs right into the end of that fire station, and so this little bitty slice is sitting on, is sitting on Steve's property, that, that little corner. It's like a piece of pie.
Can you, can you show the camera?
It's so, it's so faded, thi- this is the...
I can't see it on...
Yeah, that's the stake back there, this little dashed line up here.
Barely, barely, barely see a faint line.
Is a fence, and it comes back in right there and hits the fire station. And the fire station, for about two feet this way and about six or eight inches this way, sits on Steve's property. And then in the front, um, Steve's driveway... And then in the front, um, Steve's driveway is sitting on the fire station's property. So it would be a matter of quitclaim deeding that small section in the front to Steve and the small section, small, small section in the back to Steve and the small section in the front to the city. And that would straighten that lot line out.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
And I set aside some money to do that, should I get to buy the fire station.
Mr. McClure.
Well, first off, uh, Edward Street, and I, and I, is that 18 feet? Is that what that is?
Uh, I think so.
I think that's what that's, it looks like 18 oh point oh eight. I think that's what that is.
I think you're right.
If that's it, then it's basically a 20-foot street.
Yeah.
Um, and if that is vacated, when it was vacated, it should have went half to the one property owner and half to the other.
It's on this side of the property line. It, it's on the White Street side of the property line. It didn't straddle the property line like a normal street. It actually came off the 80-foot lot.
It did.
Yeah. It's like somebody had requested that to be an alley to get in behind these houses, because it, it definitely is not on Steve's side of the property line.
Is it on that map? Does it reflect on that map as a platted street?
On the map downstairs and on the old fire maps, it's just a dashed line.
It's, it's on the plat map, not the zoning map.
It's not on the zoning map, but it's on that map.
Yeah, and it definitely, if, if you follow the property line from Owen Street all the way down behind Elmer Lux's and down to Emilio's, Edward Street is on the White Side Street of that property. So, we always assumed that it was split between us and the people behind us, which at that time was Mrs. Cheatham. And she thought so too. But when I researched it, it's all on the White Street side.
So the city owns it?
City does own it, even though our garages sit on it.
So says Mr. Epley, you think?
So says Mr. Epley.
Okay.
But it's been vacated and there are buildings built on it. So, it's, it's only usable from the side of my garage.
So this, but, and you own this?
I own Track A, yes.
Track A, but, but none of Track D.
Well, my garage is sitting on it.
That's where the garage is, that?
At the end of that driveway is, yeah. My house actually sits over here on Lot 3.
Right. I understand that. But your garage is, sits over on D, and so you're encroaching on the city property, or that's what you're saying you had that lease for?
That's what the, that's what the lease takes care of, is all of the property behind the fire station. Plus, half of Lot 4 was bought. Well, it wasn't bought, it was given to the property owner. Half of Lot 4, where my, Track A, was actually given to the property owner. And so he owned, he was given from White Street, I assume, to the property line back there, which would include Edward Street. And then the lease, uh, which is described as behind the fire station, would have included Edward Street in the lease. Because that's where the garage originally was intended to be built, where you would come down Track A and make a right-hand turn and go into a combination of Tracks C and D. But he instead built it right at the end of the driveway, but somewhat behind the fire station on Tracks C and D.
David?
So, I guess the question is, this needs to be cleared up, number one, so that the fire station can, can go up for bid. So, Mr. Attorney, what clears this up so that the fire station can be put up for bid? And, um, help us out here.
And in view of the situation, can we just give it to him? Well, sell it to him rather than not get it?
Give him what?
Sell it to him, not, not, in view of the situation of all the property screw-ups.
There's a city ordinance that says we can't sell it to him if it's more than $500,000. City ordinances can be changed by other ordinances. So you'd have to look at going back and changing the ordinance.
Can't we just do a waiver?
Can it be sold for the appraised value or above?
State law, it has, says it has to be it.
Yeah. Mr. McClure?
It can be sold as-is, subject to any leases and encumbrances of rec, you know, I mean, it could, it could be sold.
Then the next person has to figure out what to do with it.
Yeah, you know, and if, and if somebody wants to come in there and, and, uh, pay for it, subject to that lease and everything, well, that's, you know, then, then he could have a new landlord, or he could be the property owner.
Track B can be sold for cash. It's if you try to finance it, the bank wants clear title.
Well, yeah, all he can get clear title to, basically, is B.
Can't get that, because it's an encroachment on Steve Beecham's property. So, like I said, you can sell it for cash, but if somebody wants to finance it, then they have to work out the encroachment.
We, yeah, we could sell the whole thing.
Well, we're gonna sell it for cash anyway.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna sell it.
Yes. You're not gonna get cash, aren't you? I'll get you.
Yeah, if we can't have cash, we?
The person that buys it, if they, if they have cash, there's no problem. If they want to go to the bank and finance it, the bank wants clear title.
Right.
And the lease behind it and Edward Street really doesn't affect the sale of the fire station itself, since I had it platted this way. You have the exact description of the property the fire station sits on.
Well, if, if we're gonna sell it, I mean, we have to, we have to put it all up, even what's subject to the lease. We'll sell it all.
So how do you break my lease?
I didn't say we'd break your lease, we'll sell it.
Subject to.
Subject to your lease.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
You'll have a new landlord.
Yeah. I understand.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the only way we can do it. Really, that's, that's the only way I can, subject to, to, uh, all leases and, and, and?
Encumbrances.
Encumbrances of rec, you know?
So would you sell?
Would we describe Track B?
No.
Subject to all?
Would, would have to prepare the legal, but it would be, it would be, uh, B, uh, B, C, and D.
Yeah.
And we'd sell B, C, and D, and, and just subject to all, uh, encumbrances, uh, encroachments, leases. Uh, buyer beware, I mean, that's, that's all you can do.
Such typical Eureka.
And that's all you can do.
Then you would be stripped for a dollar.
No, no, you'd sell all of them.
We passed a law.
We own this too.
We passed a law.
Dick, do you own A?
I thought he said he owns.
I do own A.
Okay.
He owns that.
So you, what you want to do is?
He owns nothing of A.
Is take possession of everything that is an A?
Yeah, I'd like to own all of Block, all of Block 4, Block 52.
Okay, well, why don't we do that?
Well, we gotta put it out for sealed bids. We can't just say, here, give it to you. Yeah.
Okay, so in view of the circumstances of all the different properties and encroachments and leases, and all the years that Dick and Dick have been trying to do this, is there a legal way that we can waive the ordinance, or whatever term it would be, in regards to this one property only because of all these different things going on? So they can just flat-out buy it, rather than risk another person getting it and having all of this confusion going on? Is there any way that we can waive the law without changing ordinances?
File a lawsuit.
What?
File a lawsuit.
Yeah, I heard, what do you mean? What? A "we" would get sued, I thought you said?
No, the city would sue them.
Sue who?
Encroachers.
Gee, Steve, you're being sued.
What, what I gave is the only way you can do.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we can waive the bid, we could, if, that's why I'm asking the attorney. If there was some way we could waive the ordinance, so we could just flat-out sell it to them without a bid. And what do you mean sue them? If we sue them, can we lose?
We file a lawsuit, and the lawsuit can be settled upon the terms that are equitable by the city and the property owners involved. But that would involve filing a lawsuit, going through a court.
For three years.
There's always ways to do it. Mickey, what he's saying is there's always ways to do it, but the simplest way is?
The simplest way is what Mr. McClure has suggested. He's your real estate person, he knows what to do.
David?
And I understand, and I, and I agree with that. The only question I had was when you mentioned selling D also, and you included D in it. We have vacated streets before and allowed the person we vacated to, to split it for a dollar, so I would just be concerned about that.
That's not, but this, this isn't that kind of street. That's what Dick has said, is that this was not, this was not an atypical street that was platted. It came off of this lot over here.
Yeah, it doesn't even show up on the sand.
It was part of this.
Edward Street does not show up on the Sanborn maps. Somebody dashed it in. It wasn't platted in the original plat. Somebody obviously requested an alley through there for some reason. And over the years on the Sanborn maps, you can see that there were buildings on Edward Street that have, have come and gone. And now there are two garages built on Edward Street, one at 10 White and one at 12 White.
So what would we be selling? Lot, we would be selling?
B, C, and D.
B, C, and, B, and?
B, C, and D.
D, and then it would always retain, uh, encumbrances and leases and all the stuff you said?
Yeah, if I did.
And you agree with that?
If I did not?
Why, he has it on record.
If, if I did not purchase the fire station, I would own Track A and?
C.
A little sliver of C and about, uh, over half of D that I have, I have a building on.
Well, but that doesn't mean you own it, it means you're encroached on it.
Well?
But he has a lease too.
I have a lease.
Yeah, I don't have a lease for D though.
And how do we do this with bids?
And it's vacated on?
You can't show us anywhere in the record that it's vacated, or at least you couldn't 10 years ago.
Well, it's vacated at 10 White Street on their property.
That's 10 White Street.
Right.
That's not, that's not yours.
And the entire street is vacated on the map downstairs. It's written on there.
It may be saying that on the map downstairs, but that's not a legal ordinance vacating it.
Oh, Lord.
So would we check the old books?
Ah, we haven't.
Oh, they want it for a trailer.
The thing's, the thing's landlocked, and I mean, it's not usable, it goes off into a big ravine, but it still belongs to the city.
It still belongs to the city.
That, that one section right there still belongs to the city.
Well, I, I mean, that's, the only way we can do it is that way. Now, if someone wanted to come in and, and be a bidder higher than, than Dick, you know, I can't say that somebody won't.
What would they want to do with that property?
Well, it'd be an idiot, Joyce, quite frankly, but?
Yeah.
You know, but?
It would just be a loss, it, it would turn into a loss.
I would just take a chance on it and put it out to bid.
I think so.
I think that's all we can do. He's willing to do.
And I'm not gonna be bitter if I don't get it, I mean, I understand.
And, and, and we don't, if we don't get, you know, get a price for the lease, what the appraised value is, we don't have to accept the bids either.
Do we have appraised value on it?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So let's do that.
You ready for your motion then? So we can put an end to this?
Oops, yeah, come on, Steve.
That makes one comment about?
Absolutely not, you've totally, totally too much to know.
You want a chair up here?
James isn't here, take it.
Now that I hear this about a new landlord.
Maybe if.
Well, it could well be, out of fear. Um, if I have property that's being encroached upon, my concern is losing part of my driveway to a new purchaser. Which, I'm assuming you're saying the city is basically just saying they would sell it as-is. And I would much, I would much rather, as an individual, deal with straightening this out with the city before you sell it.
There's, there's, there's no other way to straighten it out, unless?
Can't you straighten out the encroachment then?
Well, I mean, I suppose, I, I don't know, can we? Can we, does it take an ordinance to do that? I believe it does.
It would take an ordinance, but we can potentially trade the two slivers, but it would take an ordinance.
But my concern is losing part of a driveway as opposed, I don't, I'm not that concerned about the building being where it is, it's, but I am concerned about losing a driveway, and I would certainly love, love to have the, the land, the, the encroachment straightened out.
Well, it's in the seed's best interest to get you a vote against Mr.?
Well, we've kind of been talking about bidding against each other on stuff.
They're helping to make the neighbors of the neighborhood.
Can we just write it something in an envelope and hand it to you now?
This, this is still, this would still be the quickest way.
I understand that, but, but if I, but, I mean, I would not want to have to start a legal action before the bids are taken. But if you're selling the land with all encumbrances and encroachments as-is, then you're basically saying, I may have to deal with somebody I don't know. And they may want to come and move the fire station wall onto my property and make me pay a lot of money to try to straighten out this.
But then they gotta move it off your property on the backside, right?
But I would, I'm just saying, I would much rather deal with you folks than deal with a stranger, that's all. I like all of you, I don't know any.
You too, but that is not.
You're claiming this as a sip.
You've offered me a chair.
If, if you can?
Okay, that's, that's all.
If you can sell it contingent upon his lifetime lease over here, why can't you have the contingency that these, this encroachment exists and he, you have to accept that encroachment?
You do. I mean, it's, it's, it exists.
Yeah.
It always has.
Yeah, it always has, it's pretty hard to. If, if you, if you went out and done another survey, I'll bet you could have another survey done and then, and it'll put it right and, and it'll sell the buildings.
It wouldn't. It was like that in 81.
Look.
I tried to buy it in 81.
Yeah. Surveyors are surveyors, and, and they're not always matching.
Right, but this is also Eureka, we run into this all the time.
There are hundreds of surveys in this town.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you.
Mickey?
Um, okay, so if we're gonna put this out to bid, we have to give a legal description, right?
I follow this plat.
Okay, so what, so my point is, if we're gonna put a legal description out so people know what it is that they're buying, I would assume we could make it part of the legal description? That the section that is actually Steve's automatically reverts with the sale of the property to him, and the corner reverts back to the other one? We could put that in the legal description, right? Make that a contingent of the sale?
No, because you're not dealing with Steve.
With the, no, with the property? You wouldn't say Steve, you would say the property owner of whatever Steve's property is.
You'd be then taking Steve's property without Steve's permission, because he's not a party to the property.
Even though we'd be giving him one part and taking back another part, or whatever.
I can't decide that, or the city can't decide that we want to trade the, one of the other city properties, because we'd rather have your lot and tell you, removing you.
So if we, so if there's two foot of Steve's property that would actually be included?
Steve would probably be consensual with doing that, but you can't force the issue, you can't just do it.
He can't sign a paper saying that flip-flopping would be fine?
Well, it would take a city ordinance to do that.
Yes, exactly.
Whatever.
That's the only way you can do it, is by city ordinance. If we see, if we swap out the little sliver?
Two women could have settled this.
Elmer Lux and Stevie, that takes an ordinance.
Okay, so if we do that prior to the bidding thing?
You gotta, it's a separate ordinance.
Right, so we do that before the bidding thing? So it's done and over?
Yeah, you can, you can do it.
We should need a legal description on it.
We'd have to have two legal descriptions for those two slivers.
And that has to be new legal descriptions, or is it this one?
Yeah, no, it's, yeah.
They can be cut off of this, probably.
And who's paying for those?
Well, that's another question.
Well, at this point?
He'll pay for it.
I was going to.
No, seriously?
Well, yeah, somebody has to pay for that survey, and you, you gotta have a legal description.
This one, this isn't legal?
It's legal to me.
To have a surveyor come out and?
And do it all.
And replat these two little pieces and go to an abstract and have a bidding made.
If you're gonna speak?
Oh!
So, when you, when we do this, uh, sealed bids, there's, is there a process that's defined by ordinance, or how does the sealed bid process work? You, you, you publish it in? You, you, you publish it in papers or something, I assume?
Well, we'd publish it.
Carol Kennedy.
Again, well, we don't even have to put it in the paper. I guess we'd post it.
Okay, places? Okay, so we post it. How long does it have to stay posted? Is there a timeframe?
Yeah, I don't know.
Only in relation to ordinances.
So if there's no ordinance covering this sale, is there an ordinance?
There has to be. Has to be.
Or property?
Yeah, we got to do an ordinance.
So we just don't know if it.
It would be, it would be, the fallback would be the, the time we have to post city ordinances, which is 30 days.
Right.
You have to post it for 30 days.
Unless it's passed on an emergency basis.
Yeah.
And how much does each of them cost to get the legal description?
If they can do it with a computer, shouldn't be very much. But they have to go back out there and re-shoot all of it.
Yeah, he'd have to shoot, he'd have to shoot the corner of the building.
And Gerald doesn't have a computer.
And so what is that, approximately $1,000, $500?
Maybe, maybe $500.
$500 to $1,000 if they shoot.
Yeah.
Well, that's just 500 less than we'll get when the building sells.
But.
Well, it should bring more than $500.
No, I mean, that's 500 off of whatever it sells for, because it costs us to sell it.
Well, I can't see anybody bidding on this thing except Dick.
Well, Steve might now.
Yeah.
Right, I can't either, Joyce.
Yeah, just somebody in the waters, he would, yeah.
I can't either, but you, you never know.
I mean, you know, pay the $500 for the survey, then bid $10 for the property.
Aren't we confusing two different people here?
Yeah.
He has a problem.
Zeke maybe.
That he's willing to pay the survey to get, to fix, so that, then that, that takes care of his problems, right?
Confused.
I don't know.
We haven't seen you.
I would be willing to pay the survey to get a quit claim and get the property clear, get a clear title to the property for the city to sell.
Okay.
But as I understand your process, this would have to be done by ordinance?
Well.
That would delay the whole process by 30 days or more?
No.
It wouldn't?
The, the two ordinances, excuse me, Bud, if I may.
Go ahead.
The two ordinances can, can run concurrently, one on the swap and the one on, on putting the, the property up for sale.
And can't we emergency his to make it timely? I mean, it's kind of weird.
I don't think, unless anybody really thinks that there's a good chance they're going to croak over the time period.
Well, you have three readings in 30 days.
I mean, I, at, he waited. Poor, poor Mr. Tyler. She's up there. He's looking at you.
He ate too many cookies.
I don't know that it's an emergency.
Well, it's not. I'm just thinking, three, three readings and then, and then the 30 days before it goes into effect, it's.
Well, but it, but it's, but it's all done.
That's true.
It's all, you know, it's, you just got to wait the timeframe, and then it's, it's all, that's just.
We'd still have to get the.
Evidentiary. It's still, it's still a completed deal. And you can, you can read the three ordinances in one night, or have the three readings in one night. It'd be 30 days after that, so I mean, that's.
So we can time them the same, basically?
Yeah, sure.
I, I, it's just, it's, I see people wanting to circumvent the system because they're wanting somebody to purchase this building, but in two weeks, when my brother comes in and wants to buy something else, are we going to circumvent the procedure for him?
We're not circumventing it.
No, I think that people are, that's what people are wanting to do.
Well, mostly because they've been going after this for so many years. That's why we're saying, why keep?
Well, I understand that, but from the city's perspective, and from the state, our, the state's perspective, because they're the ones that tell you how you have to sell property, they're wanting the city to get the most money that it can get. And, you know, so I, I mean, I just think we need to go through the proper procedures.
I think we're just asking.
I mean, I'm really not asking for favoritism, and I, I've waited 28 years. I can wait two more months, six months. You know, it's not a deal to me. If I don't get the station, I'm not going to be upset about it. I intend to throw a price out there that only a crazy person would top, because it's that important to me that I have that building for my workshop. That's all I want. I'm not going to change it. I'm not going to change a thing about it. It'll still look like the fire station.
Right.
And I'm not trying to steal it. I've never tried to steal it from the day that I met the fire chief 28 years ago, whatever his name was.
John Bruscher.
No, it was one after that.
Was it Wayne then? Kurt?
Wayne Bruscher.
Wayne or Kurt or Tom?
Kurt. Anyway, I said, I really want to buy this fire station, and he said, well, why don't you? And I said, well, why don't you tell me how much you want for it, and I'll write you a check? And he said, uh, I can't do that. And I've been, I've been trying ever since. So it, it's more valuable to me than anybody else, and like I said, I, I'm willing to pay a premium for it, and if somebody wants to top it, they must have some special purpose for it, because it's, it's right in my driveway, and I need it as, as a place for me to, to have a man cave.
Uh, how about, go ahead.
I, I'd like to make a motion and make, I want to make two of them, but I'll make them one before the other, yeah, separate. First one is that we, we draft an ordinance to allow the sale of the property known as, as the White Street Fire Station, and all that the city owns continues through that.
Second.
Okay, is that the end of the motion?
That's it.
For that one?
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city, during the pro, this process of, of, of the ordinance for the fire station, that the city draft an ordinance to rectify the, in, uh, the infractions or the.
Encroachment.
Encroachments there between the fire station and the Beecham property next door.
Second.
Okay, discussions? I guess the only thing I'm having is, does that give me the leave room and give Mr. Beecham where he's going to be able to do the survey, get the legal description?
Uh.
We didn't designate that he.
Well, I mean, he's willing to do that. I don't think we need to put that in the ordinance. I think he, he's going to provide the legal description. That's.
Based on, based on legal description, okay, how about?
Yeah.
The motion is based on the legal description that's provided to the city.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to swap it out and, and the legal description will be provided.
As provided by, to the city.
We can't do part of this on a handshake. We're, we're sorry.
Well, it's just, okay. All right, uh, you want to repeat the motion again?
No. Get it from Mrs. Muir. She's.
Yeah, all right, all those in favor?
Could I hear that? Really, could I hear the motion the clerk wrote?
Oh, come on.
No, I'm serious. I just, I missed it. I really did. I'm sorry.
Can you repeat the motion?
If, without all the other people interjecting what they think ought to be in it?
That's your problem. But I just need to hear what you wrote.
Okay. A motion to, while the city is preparing the first ordinance, draft an ordinance to rectify the encroachments between the city and the Beecham property.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Did we vote on the other one?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Thank you, thank you so much. This is almost like asking for a cup.
Are you going to help get me a survey?
Yes, well, I've, I've got.
Between you two, get me a survey.
Right, we'll get you a legal description.
So we can clear that up?
Chop, chop.
Okay.
All right.
You know what you're doing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm glad somebody does.
If, if you can get him to prepare that the way that he could have that ord, those ordinances ready by next meeting.
Yeah.
I will call.
Just saying, as soon as we got those, the sooner they can be drafted.
Uh, and also, we got to have the recipe for the carm, no. All right. All right, we're on.
Oh, Lord.
Uh, number three, amended resolution number 679, correcting the one ordinance.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Does everybody have a copy of, uh, resolution, your packet 679?
I've got one with no numbers. Is that it?
Nope.
Do you want to look at it? Right there.
Oh, okay.
The, the difference, it should have been, there was a typo in the second paragraph where it says, the amount exceeds 5,000, Princess, or number 16998, should have read 1669A. Instead of 1699, should be 1669.
Okay.
This one.
Oh, okay.
I guess I just need a motion to.
Amended.
Amended.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
How does it get amended?
Basically, they're doing a reconsideration, is what they're doing, of the, what they passed last time. And they're, if they have voted in favor of doing that, they will be adding simply those change. So you'll retype the ordinance with that change.
Resolution.
A resolution.
Thank you.
And they need to vote, because it's extraordinary, by roll call.
What?
We don't have to read it, do we?
Nope.
Good.
Roll call?
Yes, if you're ready?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Page zero.
All right. Okay, that's so moved. Uh, I get a motion to discuss the, uh, financial review here?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, what I really wanted to talk about, and, and I'm going to pass this out to, to you guys, is, uh, there you go. I'll give you that.
Take one, pass one.
Something different?
Yeah, it is. Um, I mean, this is, uh, we kind of talked about a little bit on April's, but I wanted to really talk about tonight, the, uh, the budget freeze that we started in April, uh, just about a month ago. And as you well know, we, we put a hiring freeze on, uh, hiring freeze, uh, any pay rate increases. We, uh, cut down on and froze any travel, conferences, training, professional services, and maintenance and uniform. We cut down on everything except for, uh, the emergency things that we had to have. And I guess what this document that, uh, that I had Miss Stryker prepare for us here, shows us what, what our savings were between before and after. Uh, and it kind of lists on your right-hand side, the general funds and street funds, and on down Water and Sewer, Transit Parks, and, uh, CFPC and total expenditures. Uh, if you added up the totals down at the bottom between March 17th to April 14th, you'd have about, uh, $400,000. And to there, you'd have 201,000, 44,000, and 170,000. Now, after the freeze, we basically had, uh, cut it almost in, in half. Uh, is that right? Yeah. Uh, a little bit somewhere into there. We had 54,000, 6,000, 140,000. So you can see that we are, this was all necessitated because of cash flow. So you can see that we've cut our cash flow down almost in half. Uh, and I have to give the budget, I mean, give our department heads, uh, pat on the back for, for doing this. Now, you will notice that we did have, oh, I mean, the Water and Sewer was probably the biggest one. Uh, we had 200, uh, we had 100, 121, 230 plus nine, 240. And all of a sudden, over here on the right-hand side, April and May, we ended up with, uh, 90,000, a little over, not quite 90,000. Uh, so, you know, the Water and Sewer did, did a good job on two there. And same thing with, uh, you know, with our streets and, and our general fund too. Uh, and so I wanted you to see, I guess, the impact that the hiring freeze, not the hiring freeze, but the, uh, the spending freeze was having on our cash flow budgets. Yes, sir?
So these are all expenses. This whole piece of paper, this white one, is all expenses across here?
They're all expenses.
So by, so we look over past the budget freeze here, there's three periods, 428, 52, 512.
Correct.
54, 6, and 140. It's about 200,000. But then we look at the general fund over here for, uh, expenses. It doesn't, we're still 75,000 off, so, right, on this colored one?
Uh, yeah.
So technically, if I look at 200,000 and 75,000, if you hadn't reduced these things, we'd have been over 200,000. Like, that's what I'm, does that, is my math getting close?
Well, you're probably close, and your math's correct.
I don't think I want to say anything more.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, good news, bad news. I mean, we are, it's, the spending freeze is working.
They work.
You know, we need to, and we, uh, the cash flow will, will catch up with us. You know, we, we've just been doing this for so long, just, you know, that, uh, you know, it's, we just hit the drastic point. Mickey?
Um, okay, now, this was the meeting that I was not at, so I didn't know what, what was going on at that time. But when you say all new hires, as well as replacement hiring and all frozen, what happens if we have six or seven people quit?
We're not going to hire them back unless it's an emergency basis.
Um, okay, your assistant quits, the city clerk quits. We have six people quit in jobs that have to be filled.
Well, that's probably an emergency basis.
Okay, that's what I wanted to tell, since I wasn't here for that meeting.
City clerk can quit here.
But, you know, but, so, I mean, we are covered in case a whole slew of people, for whatever reason, are lying.
It's going to be, you know, if, if it's an emergency basis, as needed. I mean, we'll have to see, and it may be the point where we don't rehire. You know, I don't know. It just depends on the situation.
One of the situations I can see, but a whole ton. Okay, I wasn't at that meeting, so I didn't get all the final details.
Well, I mean, there isn't anything to it. I mean, it's just, it was a spending freeze, is basically what it is. Mr. McCloskey?
Just going to say, we can do whatever we want. You know, if, if, if you had a mass exodus, and we.
Didn't y'all have to vote on this?
We can adjust accordingly.
No.
No, this is, this is.
Oh, I thought this was voted on. Oh, okay. I wasn't here.
This is what I, as the mayor's office, I initiated.
Okay.
And I sent out to all the department heads, spending freeze, period. You're not going to spend any more money unless it's needed, it's required, necessary.
And he did that under his authority as the city administrator, and he also has the authority to hire those people so the, the vacancy be a critical, because it's, it's his authority. But what this really illustrates to me is the expenses have been cut and cut and cut, and there's not much left. There's only raise revenue, folks. There's only two ways to go, cut expenses or raise revenue to pull out of this mess. And when you cut the expenses, and you're down into this, and I, I don't want to call it nickel and dime, but I will, because small amounts of money aren't going to pull us out. It.
And, and unfortunately too, all, all the spend, a lot of this is, it's foregoing. Some of these expenses are going to come back, and we're going to have to buy, and we're going to have to repurchase. And, uh, you know, all we're doing right now is just bare minimum. You know, we're not buying anything extra. I know. So anyway, so this, this was what this is, wanted to show you guys for that. So, any other questions? All right. Um, okay, we got to add it on to the Washington Street, uh, no parking.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Go for it, David.
There was, there has been discussion going on among the pertinent players on the issue on Washington Street that runs from where Summit starts up around to the Gavioli Chapel. And there is a large section of curb on the, if you're going up towards the Gavioli on the left-hand side, that is not painted red and has parking on it. And that parking has been there for a long time. In 1996, the curb was painted red, and the parking was restricted because that, Washington Street is not as wide as White Street. It's a lot narrower. So when they, when the parking has been allowed there, it forces everybody over into the opposite lane and creates a flow of one lane. We need to remember that Washington Street and the whole Upper Historic Loop services very large service trucks, some of them that have passed in front of my bed and breakfast has been as length, the length of almost 50 feet, those Budweiser trucks. They're huge. Likewise, we now have a conditional use permit that has been issued for a lot at the bottom of Point Street. That's that little one next to the log cabin and next to the house that Jim Walton used to have, that little gravel street, to build another home. The fire department cannot service the road should there be a fire because of the parking there. So there has been discussion that has been taking place among the police chief, the fire chief, Duane and Public Works. They got Bobby Ray in, who found out about the ordinance, luckily. And then they also dragged Butch into it somehow. So they covered it really well. But the decision that they have come up with is that that curb needs to go back to red. Now, it was red in 96, and so how did it get to be unread? Well, the people that owned the White Street Inn at the time went and bought gray paint and painted over the red. And nobody said anything at the time, and that's how it went back to public. So the, what is needed because of.
Genius.
Well, I asked for red paint. I thought that would be neat. We could go back, but no, I'm teasing. But anyway, make a long story short, I think an ordinance is needed to make a change. There's something about the number of feet of red you can have.
Mr. McClun?
What kind of discussion has been had with the property owners that are there?
All the property owners within the 200 feet, similar, because there was a CUP there, are all in favor of it. There is one person who has the multifamily dwelling at the corner of where Washington first starts, that greenhouse with the stuff on the front, has discussed, and that person is the one that has applied for the permit to build a house and parking at the end of Point Street. And they have shared with the Public Works Director and the fire chief that they're arranging to also have parking down there for that multifamily. So it's all fixed, is my understanding. That's what I heard.
So we should need a motion to draw up an ordinance establishing red zone along Washington Street.
The beer trucks go by there, don't they, on Washington Street?
All those huge trucks.
The Budweiser trucks? Well, then, if they can get through, why can't a fire truck?
Because they can't turn onto Point Street. They don't have to turn. They just drive straight.
Oh, if someone's parked there, they can't turn?
They can't turn.
So.
So it was red, somebody illegally made it gray, and now we have to have an ordinance?
That's what Duane told me.
We have, what?
You're saying the Washington Street stretch reference is not listed in the code right now as being, okay, so.
That's correct.
So it's, there was no shenanigan?
Oh, okay.
Whether it was red or not, there would never have been an ordinance that established that as a no parking area.
But it got painted red. It got painted gray. That's what I said. I didn't say it was illegal or not illegal. I just said it was red, and somehow it got to be gray.
Because it wasn't supposed to be red?
The fire chief, all the department heads agree that it needs to be a no parking zone right in that area.
Make it red.
So I need a motion to.
That's it.
Establish a no parking zone.
I didn't make a motion. I just.
Along that stretch of, that section.
Do you motion?
I make a motion that we take the stretch of Washington Street that is not painted red and modify the code accordingly so that that, all that section can become red.
Become no parking.
I'll second that, I think.
Do we have, do we have addresses from one house to one house? I mean, there's somewhere, some way to define that, from the side of the road or something?
Well, I have a linear foot, feet on there. I don't have it in front of me, but we can define it by, and give some addresses.
Side of the street.
And this ordinance can, you know, again, it's.
We all know what it is in our minds, but we need to.
And for the public knowledge, at the next council meeting, we'll have street addresses and linear feet on there. So we'll have an exact ordinance on that.
It's pretty much two houses, I think, the gray one and the white one next to it, I think.
The white, is it the White Dove?
It used to be the White Dove, the old blue house.
Used to be the White Dove, yeah. And whatever, Ms. Mackey's, I think, on the corner there.
It, yeah, that's true. But you know what? I don't think they park there. They just started.
They park on up towards Hively Street, too.
Yeah.
I mean, aren't you going to do the whole thing, or you just want to do just part of it?
Well, we'll know that in two weeks.
I, let me, let me look at it. I think what we got is that section in there that's not red right now.
It was based on the fire department being able to turn onto Point Street, so it may not be all of it, folks. It may just be.
I think, I think it's only a portion.
Just a portion of it, yes.
Okay. All right, did you get a motion? Did I have a second on that?
No, I didn't.
Mickey?
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, think of saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anybody got anything for the agenda? Setting.
Do we need to do anything with the, do we need to come back with something with the property, or does that automatically come on the agenda next time, on the fire station, I'm sorry?
I will have that back on the agenda next time, yeah. Same thing with this Washington Street.
It's just automatic, okay.
All right, city council comments. Bob?
No, I have nothing.
Mr. McClun?
Yes, sir.
David?
For brevity, no.
Mickey?
No.
Hand, hand.
No.
All right.
Until next month, and then it's everybody.
Okay, I've got, I've got a couple of items. One, tomorrow night, we are going to have the G60 Entrepreneur Contest in the auditorium. That's for people who have 60 seconds to pitch their new product. And there was, I forgot some kind of, some.
A thousand dollars?
Thousand dollars cash award for the winner on that. So, and it should be a lot of fun. It's real entertaining to see what entrepreneurs have coming up with.
60 seconds.
60 seconds. So come on down to the auditorium, 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock, free, no cost, so. Also, this week, you may have been seeing painters out on the streets of Eureka Springs painting at the Plin Air Festival, going through all this week, all throughout town. There are a lot of the parks, the sidewalks, reminiscing of the, some of the older days. Also, this weekend, beginning on Thursday, I think, we will have the Master Gardeners Conference. That'll be all day, and that's going to be, I think, through Saturday. And that should be a lot of fun. You'll see a lot of people walking and touring the streets and the gardens of Eureka. Also, on the 4th, will be the Mustang Show and Parade.
Which day?
June 4th.
Okay.
And that will be at 4 o'clock. And then Memorial Day.
Excuse me, is, and that being sponsored by the Chamber this year?
And that is being sponsored by the Chamber, and that is the Mustang Car Parade being sponsored by the Chamber at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, sir.
On Saturday.
The 4th.
At 4.
The 28th.
And probably another important item is that Memorial Day, I believe that's the 30th, I think Courthouse will be closed, City Hall will be closed. So I wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day. And get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any one with a second?
Sir.
All right.[1746.99]